This meeting is called an order, let's stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Has everybody read last month's minutes?
Yes.
Can we get an approval?
Make a motion to approve last month's minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Twenty twenty-five budget adoption.
That's me. It is, of course, there weren't any changes requested or anything from last month, so if you want to pass that down, it's exactly the same amounts as was read at last month's meeting. If you want me to reread them, I can. I can make you a copy of that if you want.
Okay.
And then we need to vote on that?
Yes, I need a motion and a vote to pass the twenty twenty-five budget.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five budget.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can sit in Marv's seat or you can sit right there. A lot of them like to just sit down there, so.
Thank you.
This is Mara's associate, Jacqueline.
Nice to meet everybody.
Hello Jacqueline.
Alright. Then fall cleanup.
Fall cleanup is October twelfth. Is that right? Is that the Saturday? Does anybody know?
Yes.
Yeah, October twelfth is when fall cleanup will be.
And then trick or treats.
That you guys can talk about, but I had Shane call Lions Club and ask them when they were having their trunk or treat. And they are having their trunk or treat the thirty-first, so I would assume we would want to have trick or treat the same as the trunk or treat. So that is the thirty-first from five to eight. If anybody, I mean, you can, somebody can make a motion if you would like, we usually do.
Alright.
I'll make a motion to have our trick or treat on October thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
For five to eight.
Anybody second?
Aye.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Horse aprons.
That is, I spoke to Mike and Shane about those. It had been brought up a few years ago when Tutt was still here. And he protested pretty strongly because he thought it would alienate the Amish community. But I had, there are a lot of communities that require horse aprons on the horses. I know, I don't like running through a pile and flipping it up on my car. The other day I was going to mom's and luckily I had to turn because right after I turned, the horse and buggy went to the bathroom and I would have had no way of dodging it and would have ran through fresh stuff. So that's what that is about. You guys can discuss that if you think it's a good idea, not a good idea. It would be added to the animal ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, is where they said it would get added to when we talked about it before.
Anybody have an opinion on that?
I'm fine with putting it in our ordinances, having that turn of your old something up to have all horses and buggies to have aprons on when they come through town.
It'd be hard to enforce, wouldn't it?
Hmm, not necessarily. If, if they're coming through and they don't have an apron on and the horse decides to do his business and it's in front of me, I mean, I can enforce it that way. I mean, I'm not going to stop them if they don't have the apron on as they're going through town. But if the horse is going through and they don't have the apron and it does do it, then I'll, you know, we'll deal with it appropriately. But I think if we do, if we do do it, we send, find who we need to and just maybe send a letter, hey, this is what we're doing to the, to the Amish community and I'm sure there shouldn't be an issue there.
It would have a, I would have to advertise it in the paper because there would be a fine associated with it. So that's one of those ordinances that would have to be actually advertised.
And there's an Amish program in Wayne County that covers, that goes to every Amish family's home.
Sure.
So they're just outside of the county.
And if, if we direct up a letter, just, just.
Put it to the, the community and we can give it to whoever and then they can decimate it the way they need to and stuff like that. I don't think it'd be, I don't think it'd be a, a major issue and to enforce it, it's just, you know, deal with it when we see it and go on.
I think Portland's got.
Portland does?
Portland, Indiana.
Portland, I think Portland does and then the, what's the town north?
Burn.
Burn, they have one. I know Burn does.
Yeah.
Well, that's Amish country though.
And I mean, we've just.
Get more and more.
More and more, yeah.
Yeah.
And they don't. It's for county up there. It's not just.
Oh, it's a county?
It's county.
Yeah, it's a county or countywide out there.
I knew, I knew Burn has an county ordinance on there.
And stuff, so I don't know. I can't, obviously I can't do a county, that'd be a county ordinance that they'd have to create and do, but.
Put anything inside.
Yeah.
It didn't used to be real, real bad. Ron used to get pretty mad and he was one that brought it up before.
Yeah.
But I've noticed especially where I live, it, it's gotten more and more over the last couple of years. So.
Okay.
Somebody need to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We have the attorney draw paperwork for horse aprons.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Do you want to I or N, Lori?
Might as well do I.
Right.
I'm not gonna, I'm not, I'm, I'm not gonna argue.
Work boots, who has, we comment on work boots?
The guys were wanting to know because when we went to clothing allowance instead of Centos contract, they use part of their clothing allowance to buy boots. Well, now we don't have a clothing allowance. We went back to Centos, so I have a monthly invoice to pay for Centos. So they're wanting to know if they can still use that to buy boots or do they have to go back to buying their boots on their own as it was when we used Centos before.
So prior before, they bought their own boots for, for workers?
I personally don't see a problem with buying their boots, but you know, we'd have to give, determine a budget.
I know it's been talked about us getting away from Centos again or something like that. David said he's talked with Shane and Shane's talked about.
We have a contract, we can't get away from them until the contract.
I know, until, yeah, but going back to just doing the allowance just because it was a little bit easier and it saved us some money.
That, that would be a discussion for a later date.
Yep.
Want the boots or the?
The contract.
Contract.
The contract, yeah, okay.
Because we're tied until at least January, I mean.
I think it's, was it two-year contract? I can't remember for sure.
Yeah, so the way it's set right now is that they'll have to buy their own boots on that side until the contract's up.
Yeah, we got money in the budget to.
I'd have to do some figuring to see what's left in there, if it's going to cover the rest of the year, if there's anything left over, if there'll be anything left over. So I, once I get that, I can let you all know.
No, you're, you're probably looking at between a hundred and a hundred and fifty dollars a pair.
I'll do some figuring and see if there's going to be anything left over. I mean, technically with them two, I could just pay for one out of water and pay for one out of sewer. But that's your guys' call on whether you want to let them get work boots on the town or not. So you'd have to.
I think we'd.
Vote and say, make a motion and take a vote.
What would you all think of doing that once a year?
Fine.
Yeah, depends on what boots you buy, because I mean, I.
Well, you need to send a limit form, so that way I don't get a receipt for three hundred and some dollar pair of boots.
Does it have to be, are we doing boots or are we doing just steel-toed shoes?
They've never been required to wear steel-toed.
Okay.
I mean, I usually buy steel-toed boots.
I don't know.
Ones I usually get at Apex are a hundred and fifty or a hundred and sixty.
Sure.
I don't know if Ron ever wore it, still don't know, I've never. I mean, we didn't buy them, so I don't know. They bought their own. They bought whatever they wanted to wear, I guess.
I'd say take a look, see what's in the clothing allowance and then if it's not there, then we can readdress it.
Well, for them two, it wouldn't be, and uh, wouldn't matter.
Just take them out. Yeah.
Okay.
So you set a limit at what? Two hundred? Can't go over two hundred or one seventy-five?
If we're doing it yearly, two hundred.
Then make a motion, Steve.
I'll make a motion that the two employees can get their work boots for two hundred or less that we paid for it out of water and sewer.
Anyone second it?
If there's no second, there's no vote. It's a dead issue.
Okay.
Because I know what my work boots cost.
Why is everybody looking at me?
See if you wanted to motion it or not.
I'll motion it.
Yeah, see if she wanted to second it because obviously Mike doesn't want to, so.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll second it, but I'm going to give her an opportunity to. I'll second that.
You second, okay, alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Good, alright. Unfinished business. Corrections on project problems.
Had to do with that tree to put that on there as far as getting an update on the stormwater project because I know that the two years is coming up here soon. And there's still been a lot of standing water in areas of the new construction area that should not be standing and still is there. There's been other issues come up as far as sinkholes and tying the old into the new, the update on it. And then there on Davis Street, the road where they ran it through, it is sinking and cracking.
Already?
Over there by Green Street where the old rig was.
Oh, so not the sinkhole?
No, not the sinkhole.
No, not the sinkhole. This is on down there at Green and Davis. The road's literally cracking and dropping on that side of it, so. They just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention to make sure nobody.
On the north side sees one.
Outside of, outside of a meeting finalizes that job completion until it is brought in front of the board and all issues are resolved.
Is that where that tree stump was taken out?
No, that's where they dug through there, where it goes through.
That field.
Where it used to be single, lane bridge, that little bridge.
Now. So when they backfilled it, it looks like they just put mainly sand. Well, that sand has started to settle over top of everything and really fill in, so now it's just dropping off the edge of that. So like if you go over and you can look at it, I mean, it's literally on the northeast side of Green Street coming off of it, you can see the start of it and it just drops down. So. I know they're still working on trying to get, figure out how to connect that one there at Linden and Davis to a new, to one of the new structures. The issue is elevation right now. So they came up to complete that last Tuesday, realized the elevation was bad. That's where we're at right now, so they fixed the sinkholes in Max's old field. And then now we're just waiting on them to figure out how we're going to fix the rest of it. So I reached out to Lou yesterday, asked about some stuff and never got a call back, so.
I know I've sent emails as far as all the standing water on the sidewalks and stuff like that where people walk and it's literally a little mini lake at all of those intersections. And I felt that all that stuff should be corrected because the town hired someone to do the elevations and they should be correct, you know, all the water that is literally standing on twenty-seven when it rains is a hazard because everybody has to drive through it and it wasn't that way before and it shouldn't be that way now, so. And that's the reason we hired a engineering firm to take care of all that stuff. So I just want to make sure nobody is approving to sign off on the installation of it till everything is brought in front of the board and corrected.
What's our normal procedure for calling them, getting ahold of them, bringing it to?
Um, so usually for most towns, it's a town manager or your like head utility person or whoever's in charge on your like day-to-day. They usually try and do most of the talking that way. When they show up, it's mainly like your head person is sitting there talking to the board and the board can trust that person saying, hey, we know this guy versus somebody that's just coming in here saying, well, yeah, everything's looking great, you know? They do like the walkthroughs and stuff like that. So even like the final walkthrough needs to have like myself and David with them and then doing the whole walkthrough. Like that means going to everything. If they say, well, this is the elevation, we got to be able to check random elevations. I'm not saying you do it every single time. If you did that every single time, I mean, you're talking days. But you go through, hey, let's check this one. Ten, ten of them later, hey, let's check this one. But if they're saying the elevation's at thirteen and all of a sudden it's at nine, now we have issues.
So that's what, nobody knew that the water walkthrough, still, I've never been told who did it.
Yeah, I, I've asked for that documentation, who signed off on all of that and still have not received any of that. The town's out right now about twenty-four thousand dollars on correcting all that stuff, so.
I think he's done.
Yep, I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention.
Okay. Unfinished business, that's what that was. Check it off. Okay, do we want to discuss any of the department reports at all?
You don't have to read them, you just got to go over through, go over what needs to be voted on.
Okay. So.
That should all be in order. Did he get those street quotes up there with him?
Did you have any that need to be voted on or?
I just want to bring this up to get the board potential on line.
We're going to go ahead and get carries all the way.
Go ahead.
The explorer, I guess on the back half for the alignment, has to get, they called it an aftermarket. It's basically to help with the rear alignment because if it keeps the way it is, it's going to start eating through tires. They quoted me a very high price at Greens Fork, so I'm looking into other alternatives, but I want to bring you guys' attention that it's going to need addressed soon. I'm going to talk to Speedy Pete's. He says he'd look at and see if it's something that he can do and then get a price from him. In the meantime, we're going to really have to every time rotate those tires so it don't eat up the tires. And they're brand-new tires on, on it, all around it.
Yeah, that because of back tires, they didn't even last, what, three months?
Uh.
Three months?
Maybe six, if we were lucky and they were starting to wear on there.
Right.
So something to do with it can't end and just got to get something to adjust it back out. And it's just age on the vehicle and it happens, I guess, according to what I was told, so. Bring it to your guys' attention. Once I get that information, then I'll pass it back on to you guys and come up with the, come up with the money somehow, so. But this one, bring it to you guys' attention, so.
They're not there while. I can tell you what they roughly are.
For what?
About three quotes.
Or which trees? Probably looks like.
Well, just go in order and then when he gets there, we'll talk about. Okay.
Leaf box.
Okay. Leaf box.
Redrawn. We ain't got to read that.
So what is your comment on the leaf box? Do we need to vote on?
Yes, we had to have three quotes, so that's what I put together, but Menards is going to be the cheapest. The only thing I didn't put in the quote was screws and nails because we have a bunch of different ones sitting in the shop that's just piling up. Just little different boxes, but some of them are a lot of the same screws and stuff. So we're going to try and use all of that, see where we're at before we go and just buy a bunch of extra screws and nails that we don't really need. Hundred and twenty-five thousand?
No.
No. Yeah, that is the only place I could.
Right here.
Hey, that is the only one that I could actually find that was pre-built. That's a pull behind with everything already attached together. And it comes with like a whole automated system to where you can literally have one person out there.
That sounds like what went here.
Yeah, I mean, they literally just hit a button, like the guy can sit in the truck the entire time and just hit buttons and it controls the entire leaf back system. And when he told me the price, I just laughed and said, thanks. Down there, it was like, yeah, I ain't getting approved, but appreciate your help.
As far as the list of material that you have on there, you have OSB and it needs to be changed over to plywood.
You want plywood?
It needs to be plywood because the OSB's not going to last as long as what plywood will if you paint it on that side of it. So it needs to be switched over to plywood.
So it looks like we definitely going to be going with Menards.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Do we still want to, like, do I still need to stay at half inch or?
Yeah, yeah, half inch. It's just going to add a little, but you still should be underneath that approved.
Underneath, you got six hundred?
Right.
Okay.
Alright. I need a motion for us to go with Menards?
I'll make a motion for them to buy the material from Menards.
Second.
All.
Aye.
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 And that is the six hundred, right?
Yes.
Okay.
HCR flow reader.
So what's in there now is an ecosystem that's not built to actually read the flow of the river. So it's not working properly. That's what we got hit on that inspection back in August. And so that right there is a laser to pretty much read it. And more or less, it's going to give us a, about ten times accurate reading than what we got now.
Okay, we could only get the one quote?
Yeah, so.
Oh, is that the one?
With the sister companies where they're not going to bid against it because they're owned by a parent company. So all the money goes into the same overall fund, so they don't care. And then Rob Jefferson, who usually does most of our work, I asked for a quote from him. He said that he'd have to come out and do what Gail Anderson just did and he's like, I'm not going to charge the town two thousand dollars for me to spend the same amount of time out there when they can come and do it themselves. I said, well, I appreciate that and that's why he'll still be one of our first calls, but.
So what brought this up? I know you said that we got team fighting and.
Yeah, and then, so then going through everything, they found out that that whole system's not reading right. And like when they go through it, it's supposed to have a temperature gauge built into them. Well, the temperature gauge will literally read a thousand degrees, well, it didn't have a thousand degrees. And so it's practically fried that part and that's what's made it completely inaccurate. I'll get the words there.
It looks like the.
So it's like, it's, it's almost four thousand dollars and that's all the parts, their labor and everything. The only thing is the shipping, which he wasn't sure how much the shipping was going to be. He said between twenty and forty bucks, so I put on there twenty to fifty just in case, just to cover our end.
And that's something that has to be done because it's as far as on the item. Who usually does that for us every year as far as checking?
So we've been using Pork and that's the sister company of Gail Anderson. So that's why they said they weren't going to even come out and take a look at it or do anything because they said, well, if you got Gail Anderson out there, we do the exact same thing and we're sister companies, so. Whether you use them or us, we're still getting paid. It's like, alright, okay, sounds good.
What is an HCR?
That's that little thing that's down below the twenty-seven bridge for our discharge. Tells us all our different.
Measures the flow of the creek and the temperature and all the stuff that they need.
Tells us how much we're discharging.
Iger requires them to have, send their reports.
The last report that was done, it wasn't accurate on that side of it, so. We, we, we took a ding for it, so.
Yeah, we don't want another ding on our inspection.
I'll make a motion to have the HCR flow reader replaced by, um.
Gail Anderson.
Gail Anderson for roughly somewhere right around four thousand dollars.
Anyone second?
Second.
I'm like waiting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, what about the trees next to the city building?
I think that's these quotes. I just seen Tree Amigo.
Oh, yeah.
David printed them and laid them out, laid them out.
Yeah.
So the other day before the storm got real, real bad, me and Trish were outside and I heard cracking and looked and went, the middle tree has split, the trunk has split into four. Well, it's split into three and one of the three split into two. And it was going like this and you could see branches falling off of it. You can see the crack going up the trunk of the tree. So if we get another bad storm, if that falls, depending on where it falls, it's either going to come on this building or that building over there. If it goes north or south, the other two trees are going to catch it. But the tree closest to the basketball court is split into three, is it two or three trunks?
Yeah.
And Tree Amigo's, that's what happened at the one at the park that went through the gazebo. When the trunk's split like that, one side dies off and it's going to fall. So this quote is for those trees.
So one's just to do the middle one and then one's to do both trees?
Yeah, this one is just to do the medium-sized tree, which is the middle one. And then this one, you can see it says medium tree and small tree.
You guys have this?
I think David only made one copy and laid it at your, because that's what I went to go check my emails to make copies in there.
So the one needs to be replaced or taken out. Does the other one need to be done?
The other one needs to be done. The only thing is, is we've talked about possibly doing it ourselves because once that middle one's out, we could technically cut it and drop it like we've done a couple of trees in town. The only thing is, is we were kind of like rough guessing how much it would cost for us to do it. And we'd be anywhere between six to eight hundred dollars, probably at least. And that includes our labor time, cleanup, getting like the brush out to Buckley's to get rid of, whatnot, but.
Let's say get one done and let them do, deal with the other one.
Yeah, because the one that's going to fall is the one that is by itself. That's the one that needs to be addressed ASAP where it does fall on the school or the city building.
But we'll have to rent a grinder if we do it ourselves.
Right.
We'll have to grind that stuff. Which, I mean, they're already out here. We're okay with having them do it, but it's up to you guys.
So just the tree in the middle is the first one, right?
Yeah, that one should be like sixteen something.
And then the other one.
Yeah, when you add the other one, it's twenty-four-ish, twenty-five-ish, something like that.
That'd be for, oh, that one, yeah.
So that's why I'm saying like we're not really saving a whole lot of money. So that's why I'm saying like we're not really saving a whole lot of money.
I think for the nine hundred dollars, my.
Cause that would do both and they're ground out.
Like they're doing both and.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to have Tri- Tree Amigos remove both of the trees for. Twenty-five eighty-four.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Done. Do we need to discuss emergency response plan?
That is what I emailed you guys, that's this big long. Paper right here, that's why I emailed, I told you I have a printed copy, that's a requirement. For Walker to have done, so. It just needs voted on.
Oh, okay.
And then after it's signed, I'll make two more copies, cause we gotta have three copies at different, at one copy at three different places.
Basically, you just had to go through and update all the information, right?
Yeah.
The names and things of that nature.
Yep.
Okay.
Who we use, backups, the thing we use, and then um at some point we'll have to have. Technically like a quick training on it with all the council and then the guys that work here and stuff like that technically.
You guys wanna look at this or did you?
I already did.
Did you?
I already did.
Good, alright. Um, yeah. You have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept the emergency response plan.
Second?
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, and the pump at the school?
Yeah, so they coolly just got me a quote around six o'clock. I'm gonna have to have them redo the quote, but. So the pump that was at the school that was broken, they looked at it, they can't give us an actual uh. Estimate on how much it would cost to fix, because they're gonna have to go through the whole inside and practically just take the base of it, tear everything out and put it back in. So they're guessing around twelve thousand dollars. It's roughly thirteen and a half for a new pump and that comes with a two-year warranty.
We've run into this before when Ron would bring in what it would cost to rebuild and get a new one, and most generally they were so close that we had always just get the new.
Pretty much the way I was explaining is you got a shell car, everything in the engine bay has to be replaced. What are you gonna do if you're just gonna go buy a new one, I've got a warranty and everything else to it, so. Like I said, I, they didn't have any waiver on what it would cost, so I'm waiting on that quote to come in. So I mean, we're okay with motioning to buy a new one, I can get you the quote printed off here.
Is that a utility supply?
No, that is coolie.
I mean.
No.
The pump doesn't come from a panel.
But those are special pumps.
Well, they don't even have to motion, they, you just need to get three quotes for a new one, if they say it's okay to get a new one. You still need to try and get three quotes. If that's anywhere possible, that would be a sewer.
Yeah, I mean, it's a straight, it's just the load station pumps. And then we'll also have to look at possibly having a backup, cause I believe Northload Station and the school are the exact same and we don't have a backup. Pump, but we have one for the park, cause the parks are bigger.
Okay, does anyone want to make a motion on that?
Until I get the quotes, there's not a motion to make.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood. Alright, leaf pickup will be Monday and Thursday.
Turnover just have to send out.
Yeah, I can put it on the website.
On that.
I need the quotes that you have. Yeah, I was gonna give you, you can have both of those right in a bit.
Alright. Can move on. Is there anything else we need to discuss as far as the department reports?
It would be as far as on the street department getting the. Phone and having all the uniforms turned in prior to the payday and keys.
Okay.
I think we're ready for claims.
Well, it's on the visitor.
Isn't it a storm?
Oh, I forgot.
Hey, visitors. Do we have anybody who wants to say something?
Yes.
I think you got two, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Tom Dodridge, I'm with the Found City Lines Club. Wanna thank you for setting the date for the trick or treat, we actually kinda went around. Uh every year we wait for you guys to set the date to set our trunk or treating, we kinda like, well, if we can get that date, that'd be awesome too, so appreciate that.
That's why I had Shane call and check.
Yeah, like we're kinda, like, well, I don't know. Secondly, um and this is a little late in coming, cause leave our coffin date is already over. Um but the last several years, you guys have generously donated to us to help offset costs. And would ask if you'd be willing to do that again. We're in a position with the this last festival where the the turnout was less than expected. Due to the weather on both days, hot Saturday and rain on Sunday. And we are looking at a fairly significant budget shortfall to make it through till next year. So any uh help you can guide us and send our way would be greatly appreciated.
What did we do in the past?
That's what I was gonna say, you guys are probably gonna have to think about that and discuss it, cause what we've done in the past was use the ARPA money and the ARPA money's gone.
Yep.
Was two thousands what we were doing, have always done?
Yeah, we did it the last two years, cause we had ARPA money, but the ARPA, the rest of that ARPA money went to pay. Uh Triads invoice for the paving project being forty-five percent complete. Cause I was, he said he wasn't going to do what needed to be done if I didn't pay that invoice, so.
And that has to do in reference to as far as finishing up the stormwater project for?
No, the invoice I paid, oh, you mean what he said, yeah, 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 yes. So I'm not real sure where that money, where we could get that money from, I'd have to look into it.
So did we get the paving project or not?
I don't know, he hasn't answered my emails either.
Can we get back with you?
Yes. Uh we're we're currently. Uh well off enough to to make it through the first of the year without any issues.
Right.
Um summer will start to be questionable.
Understand.
So, thank you.
You're welcome. And this lady back here was.
Yeah, so there's a pamphlet that, um there's a lady here, her name is Candy Jackson, and um she is wanting to. Put up a, it's called a wind phone and basically is basically like a therapy to help with um. Lost ones and stuff like that, she does, she lost her son. A year ago, is that what you said?
April fourteenth last year.
Uh so well over a year ago as far as that goes and um. It is like a grieving mechanism on that side of it and she's wanting to put one of them down at the park, is that correct? Cause her son is.
Yeah, he's buried in Willow Grove. And I I know that you guys have been improving, making lots of improvements out there, redefining and that type of stuff. And it wouldn't be any expense to you, I would cover all the expense. I was just wanting to know if it would be an option, I know I would have to come with like. Blueprints or drawings or what it would look like and that type of stuff, it wouldn't be anything large, it's just like in the pamphlet, something small.
Yeah, that's just uh, and that'd be for anybody as far as on that side of it to help with any kind of grieving and stuff like that. On that side of it, so um she brought pamphlets up here, if everybody wants to take a look at it and maybe talk about it and um. I don't have a problem with her doing it as far as on that that side of it, so.
There's a couple in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you wanted to discuss it and then um. The if you were okay with it, then it would be like where at, maybe designated area.
Yeah, and that's where we would reference you to, the. Guys that work as far as on that side of it and also with the town marshal as far as just to make sure that, cause there's cameras down at the park and we'd wanna make sure that it was. In sight as far as to where we can keep an eye on and make sure no vandalism happens and stuff like that. And that there's no utilities or anything that would hinder on that side of it, so. You fine with it?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to allow Candy Jackson to do a wind phone down at the park.
Anyone second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good, okay. Alright. Do we get a motion to approve claims and payments?
I'll make a motion to approve claims and payments.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make that a motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.